Good evening colleagues, welcome to the meeting of the council, please be seated. I am required to inform you that this meeting is being recorded. If any member of the public or press would like more information about this, or if they intend to discuss proceedings themselves, please contact the Strategy and Democracy Services, who will be more than happy to advise. Any member who wishes to speak on any of the agenda items should use the microphones available. As members, officers and members of the public will be aware, Sarah and Chris Cookson, the parents of baby Carter Cookson, are trying to raise awareness of their appeal to find a heart for their three-year-old son. Eddie Carter suffers from serious heart problems and urgently requires a heart transplant. What this young family are facing is truly unimaginable. I have written to Sarah and Chris, sending our thoughts and prayers and offering our full support. I wanted to comment on their plight here today in order to raise further awareness of their Find A Heart For Carter campaign. I am sure I speak for all members and officers when offering our heartfelt best wishes to the Cookson family at this very difficult time. The first item of business is declarations of investment. No declarations have been received. Does anyone now wish to verbally make any declarations before we move on to the next business? The next item of business is the minutes of the meeting of council held on the 28th of November 2018. All the executors are due to arrive. The next business is main communications. Do you want to raise communications to report on this occasion? The next business is the consular report of the corporate director, Business and Resources on the 2019-20 Council Tax Base. I will ask councillor Ed Martin to forward the report. Councillor Martin?
Thank you Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, this report considers the council's tax base for 2019-20. The tax base determines the level of extracted annually compulsory council and major pieces of police and private commissioner and corporate authority. This is from a specified level of council tax calculated on advanced day claim. The tax base figure for 2018-19 is calculated from current dwelling numbers in each council tax band. Estimated number of exemptions, discounts and net additions to the housing costs over the coming year. The big ones also take account of non-collection. The local council tax support scheme forms part of the determination of the tax base. The scheme will remain unchanged from previous years. The council was by law set tax base for four significant penalties a year and informed reset the authorities of calculating the number of advanced day equivalent dwellings before 31st of January. Therefore, the tax base for 2018-19 degree are sent into 2019 as detailed in the report. Thank you Mr Mayor.
Is that accepted?
Accepted.
Are there any questions on board? Does anyone else wish to speak in the report? Councillor Milburn?
Yes, thank you Mr Mayor. This appears to be very well considered report on the council tax base, tax base. The amount to support it, it gave me a good insight into the structure of the council tax and actually proved to be interesting.
Thank you councillor Milburn. Any other questions? Legislation requires that an in-vote statement on certain decisions related with the setting of the rules, including the calculation of the council tax base. I will therefore ask the head of legal services to conduct the vote.
Thank you Mr Mayor. We've not voted in the traditional one up. I will call out the name of each member in alphabetical order. And if you indicate what you call your name, whether you are for or against the motion or not opposed. So I will start with councillor R. For. Councillor England. Councillor Anderson. For. Councillor Allen. Councillor Boyer. Councillor Brady.
Oh, sorry.
Councillor Brady. Councillor Callaghan. Councillor Cunningham. Councillor Dean. For. Councillor Dick. For. Councillor Jackson. For. Councillor Dixon. For. Councillor Johnson. For. Councillor Duncan. Councillor Ellison. For. Councillor Finn. For. Councillor Forman. Councillor Gibson. For. Councillor Hamilton. Councillor Eyre. Councillor Heventon. For. Councillor Hopson. For. Councillor Huddley. For. Councillor Keegan. Councillor Kerr. Councillor Kengah. For. Councillor List. For. Councillor Emanke. For. Councillor Emanke. For. Councillor Kay Maxwell. For. Councillor N Maxwell. For. Councillor N E Maxwell. For. Councillor K. For. Councillor Q. Councillor Mullen. For. Councillor Hilldan. For. Councillor Pico. For. Councillor Eric. For. Councillor Portas. For. Councillor Brower. For. Councillor Pootsham. For. Councillor Tervis. For. Councillor Sewell. Councillor A Smith. For. Councillor E Smith. For. Councillor K Stevenson. For. Councillor S Stevenson. For. Councillor Strang. For. Councillor Shirena. For. Councillor A Walsh. For. Councillor M Walsh. For. Councillor Welsh. For. Councillor S. For.
The next business is the consular report of the corporate director, Business and Resources on the Treasury Management Review as of 30th of September 2018. I will ask councillor Ed Martin to forward the report. Councillor Martin?
Thank you Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, the charter initiative of Public Finance and Accounting Code of Practice on Treasury Management requires cabinet and council to receive a video of how to manage treasury management. The report covers the period from 1st of April 2018 to the 30th of September 2018. The charter initiative of Public Finance and Accounting have released an updated version of the Prudential Code on Treasury Management Code of Practice. These reports have been reviewed and reported to the full council outlining the changes to the codes before the end of March 2019. The UK's economy growth has been modest on the first half of the year and is expected to be 1.5% at the end of 2018. The CPI of consumer price index inflation was 2.4% in September 2018 with the expectation and is likely to fall slowly towards Bank of England's 2% target. In August 2018, the Bank of England base rate was raised from 0.5% to 0.75%. The council had cash investments of £39.73 million at the end of the year. A further £154.72 million was invested on behalf of the banking firm. The credit limits for the organisations that the council lands to are set in consultation with leading asset management. During the period, no new companies have been added to the lending list. In the first half of the year, three new PWL borrowings were arranged as the Public Works and Own Board were talking £15 million at interest. Other short-term borrowings were raised in assistance by Carrefour Management. Also, £11 million worth of debt matured and was repaid. As of 30th of September 2018, the external borrowing for the general fund was £328.6 million against the forecast financing requirement of £372.4 million. For the HRA account, the external borrowing was £292 million against the fourth act requirement of £287.5 million. The general fund under financing of £3.8 million was currently currently under the council's cash balances. The housing revenue account is currently over 100 but will move to a neutral position by the year end. Each year, the council is required to set a range of treasury and prudential indicators that provide framework within which the treasury management portion is delivered. The treasury activity was controlled within these indicators during the period. In addition, all investments and borrowing have been conducted in accordance with Treasury Management strategy that was approved by council on the 22nd of February 2018. I will report councillor Matt Anderson to note the report here.
Is that accepted?
Accepted.
Are there any questions on board? Does anyone else wish to speak in the report? Councillor Milburn?
Thank you Mr Mayor. My heart is for this report. In particular, I'd like to know the upward growth in the UK economy despite the uncertainty surrounding Brexit. I would like to remind the members of this council of his conservative influence, eating of the government and the government. 3.4 million new jobs, youth in the Royal Tower, the tax cuts of 10 million hardworking people, while they still continue to invest in public services. Also probably the NHS, which put the long-term plan, you see, is put in an extra £20.5 billion by 2022. We can now live longer and have healthier lives. And just to reiterate, it's about having a star economy that allows us to have star public services. Jeremy Corbyn will put all this at risk, more spending, less jobs, more borrowing and wicked public services. Which is why I was very pleased to see the vote at your conference in the government fair yesterday. And all my thoughts surrounding Brexit is this conservative government which is continually covered and delivered to the UK. And they are suggest whilst I mention Brexit, that the Labour leaders of this council get in touch with their leader and tell Corbyn to get round the table and take up the prime minister's bother to meet and deliver on Brexit. I realise that the PM's deal was overwhelmingly rejected, but we must remember all the JARO and SANSI was combined, voted by 68% to leave the EU. On the subject of fiscal responsibility, I want one more liability of £113.7 million that the council has on existing PFI contracts, not least on SANSI school, the future of which remains uncertain. The Chancellor of Canada discovered these last year from the past year. Due to the fact that the expensive interest repayments each way the council's budget, we will need member councillor Martin to rule out these clarify in the future and put another legacy of clear behind us. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you Mr Mayor. Yeah, well, central office looked well today, haven't they? They really did, a real good, good brief to speak. Especially then the Conservative Party is a such turmoil and the Conservative government is such turmoil. Yeah, I have been, I have been vocal, I have been vocal from my knowledge of my portfolio, councillor. Yes, yes, of course. But we are not going to comment on Brexit or anything, you know, or anything like that because it lamb hounds deer. You know, it's certainly maybe watching the gallery by officers from the Conservative Party acting on law. But anyway, he's doing well and the thing's been well for him. But on the PFI of course, at the time, now I personally was very skeptical about PFI, but of course PFI was the only game in town. And what it meant was that in this, it certainly can sell, thanks sake, you could get more for all schools rebuilt under the property finance incident. That was a great case and still pay that price. But nothing comes, nothing that's worth having comes easy. Everything comes at a price. But of course, you remember, the Conservative government also pushed this forward. And of course, we've had the scenario of last year when Trilling collapsed, whereby thousands of people were put up, were put up, were put up on work because of this, this, this ceremony of wanting to, wanting to our private firms doing public services. So councillor, just give them a good work and I hope you get some more good praise because it's not ungood for your own good.
Is the motion agreed?
Agreed.
The next business is the consular report of the corporate director, Business and Resources on review of the polling districts and polling places. I will ask councillor Ed Martin to forward the report. Councillor Martin?
All right, thank you Mr Mayor. I don't think that the Conservative Party brought a brief for this one because it's a fair standard, fair standard before. Mr Mayor, section 16 will be later registration and registration after 2013. We require the council to carry out and complete a review of polling district places and polling stations within some time, say, in the safety month period between the 1st of October 2018 and 31st of January 2020. The review process is described in paragraph 5 to 7 of the report. The purpose of our review is twofold. The secret was shown a polling election lectures in the constituency of reasonable facilities for voting as are practical and in the circumstances and that so far as reasonable and practicable polling places are accessible to all electors and chosen those who are safe. As members will be aware, representations were invited for a review, for residents, members, the MPs, the acting attorney officer and candidates at the recent election. Those which were declared and circulated to members were also put online before becoming considered by the constitution committee which met on the 9th of November 2018. The recommendations of the committee are set up in a report before members today. As members will see, the committee's recommendations would result in there being one less portable polling station and one more static station. They would be overwhelmed by a polling station number up at 19. So council has recommended to endorse the recommendation of the council of the constituency that is set up in the report and that we consider the recommendation and that we also authorize head of legal services to publish the decision of the council with reasons including office clerk information aligned with the requirements of the legislation.
Is that accepted? Is that accepted?
Accepted.
Are there any questions on board? Does anyone else wish to speak in the report? Councillor Milburn?
Councillor Martin, my good. Mr Mayor, this could be a well considered report. I think it asks servants from using less power governments to sensible on the elections. My good.
I would just like to, just to comment, this is the third day that council has said this is a well considered report. All reports that this council have done, I think, and I thought, well, he's a resource. Well, we've been doing this game for quite a long time now. And officers have very, very competent in doing reports representing council and roles can be forced. Thank you.
Is the motion agreed?
Agreed.
The next business is the consular report of the corporate director of children, adults and health on the annual report of the director of public health 2018. The future act is not yet written. I will ask councillor Dixon to forward the report. Councillor Dixon?
Thank you Mr Mayor. Under the London Food and Care Act of 2012, director of public health has a duty to write an independent annual report to the health of the local population. Under the same law, South Tyneside Council has a duty to publish it. Members, I grant you the right to do the annual report of the director of public health titled, "The Future Is Not Yet Written." Every child lives the best start in life. This means every child in the world, not just those from a privileged background. And this means the best start, not just an average or moderate start, the best. South Tyneside Council and partners have very clearly committed to the health and wellbeing strategy and through our children and families board. However, we know that giving every child the best start in life is a challenging aspiration and one that would take time and commitment to achieve. This annual report takes a look at the factors affecting the health and wellbeing of children and families in South Tyneside. It looks across the life course of a child from pre-conception through becoming an adult and explores the role of individual factors which are healthy for kids and the influence of the place in which we feel and grow. The report explores some of the key health statistics for two heritage that South Tyneside children born and raised in the world. Jack is a child of Simon's, I remember that. And Emily is born in Cleveland, Scotland. Their journeys through life are quite shoddily different. Two are named in Jack expecting to live 75 years and Emily eight years. A whole 12 years longer. Jack would be expected to live 53 years of his life in health, whereas Emily would be expected to live 71 years. This means that Emily is potentially living a whole 18 years extra healthy life. As the report states, thankfully, their future will not set in stone. We can change it and influence it. We can shape what we do to help Jack in particular to experience some of the same life chances and environments that Emily might get. We can aim to level the playing field. The report lays out five recommendations that the council, partners, communities and people should aim to deliver to help give both Jack and Emily the best start in life. Take a whole family and system approach to supporting pre-conception, pregnancy and birth. Looking beyond the biological process to having a child and recognising environment and community around the family. That makes morguing in pregnancy, ensuring a completely healthy pregnancy and support the uptake and continuation of breastfeeding. Focus on the critical first 101 days of a child's life to prevent adverse childhood experiences and adverse social circumstances, including, for example, exposure to domestic abuse. Ensuring adult of reach childhood and finding a stomach and port resilience and high skills in all unique up to help them aspire to improve their future and achieve their full potential. The report goes further in recommending how we can accelerate the delivery of our mission by bringing approaches and services together. This means going beyond what we need traditionally few health services such as medical services and health services and mechanising the significant role that good housing, employment and community play in giving every child the best start in life. Specifically, this would mean creating best start of planning partnerships which would bring all key services, partners together in the community under one single approach. The annual report outlines a clear report of the South Tyneside and one where the council will continue to lead and guide the agenda. Therefore, Mr Mayor, I ask all members of the council to endorse annual report and its publication by South Tyneside Council. Thanks, Mr Mayor.
Is that accepted?
Accepted.
Are there any questions on board? Does anyone else wish to speak in the report? Councillor Milburn?
Agreed. I support this report and fully support the council's ambition to give every child the best start in life. There are so many factors which affect young persons' opportunities in life. And public health is an important part in this. I also welcome the emphasis of the report, groups of working resilience and life service to young people. New people are our future. We need to look after new people, support them and give them the best start in life. Thank you.
Very accomplished.
Is anybody else wish to speak? Thank you, thank you. Is the motion agreed?
Agreed.
The next business is the consular report of the acting corporate director of Economic Reconciliation on the GAN Act 2005, proposed revised statement of licensing policy 2018 to 2022. I will ask councillor Nancy Maxwell to forward the report. Councillor Maxwell?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This report provides for the revised state of principles in respect of the GAN Act 2005. Effectively from January 2019 to January 2022. The council has issued the law to access and charge as a teaching in the family act 2005 to renew the state of principles at least once every three weeks. The state of policy promotes three fundamental objectives in England. Preventing young people from being a source of crime or disorder, being associated with crime or disorder or being used as sport crime. Ensuring that gambling is handled in a fair and lawful way and protecting children and normal persons from being harmed or exploited by gambling. With the proposed revised state of principles, it should capture the fault of any score. And takes account of the revised statutory guidance especially by the gambling commission. It has a lot of general principles that are applied to ensure they can consistently license their decisions on it. There are a number of provisions proposed in common policy, including updating information for applicants undertaking local risk assessments as part of their application. Reference to the election for the health support to gambling and whaling. Of pending changes to the maximum stage for fixed parts betting terms. Councillor asked to approve the revised state of principles for 2019 to 2032.
Is that accepted?
Accepted.
Are there any questions on board? Does anyone else wish to speak in the report? Councillor Milburn?
My good. I fully support this report. It is a sign of a lot of King Street has great number of pensioners and establishments holding the annual 365 plan for the town. It is a very plans of the town to limit the number, limit the walk of these governing establishments being established. After all, it's well-known the shop of South Cheems is full of charity shops, phone shops, cafes and betting shops. On the subject of the 365 plan for the town, I like to question whether the 365 plan is just perceived as a landmark public building which the member council can grip and actually use. As most of the ones I've seen, always have a picture of the doors or a new unit change. I love the new unit change and we love this area with the ambition behind 365. However, does the 365 plan actually deliver for businesses in the town? The council produced after three parties meeting before Christmas, what success did this have? The item will be of being more power pocket free, but the current 367, okay? 946, well, maybe Joe will seem to do much better.
Councillor Milburn, I'm a little bit off track here. This is the GAN and.
Yes, it's an interesting business chain.
The GAN is not a show, you know. Well, continue.
However, does the 365 allow us to see South Cheems become a more pleasant leisure destination focusing on bars, nightlife and restaurants, taking advantage of our amazing coastline? Restlessness could South Cheems become a better destination like Timeworth? There are also beautiful buildings in King Street, but what would take council and assembly, someone who gets the toys, to get rid of somebody's empty toys? Become more residential, which would be far better than any shop. Could be used by customers who purchase clothes.
Councillor Milburn, we have still got now. So we'll provide this, please. Is there any further comments on the, on the GAN Act? Councillor Maxwell?
Mr Mayor, just to advise the council, there is no legal mechanism under the GAN Act 2005 to restrict the number of premises.
Mr Mayor, in relation to the 365 project of course, which is on a regular basis scrutinised by the scrutiny committees and indeed I appear in front of the overview scrutiny last week, which was well reported. Councillor Milburn as a member didn't attend and I don't think he's attended the scrutiny this year.
Is the motion agreed?
Agreed.
Councillor Maxwell, did you wish to? No, okay. Motion to agree. The next business is to receive questions on our procedure rule. Your questions have been received on this rule. The next business is the theme of petitions received on our council procedure rule. Now, one petition has been received on this rule. I will explain the procedure to follow for the petition. The appropriate member will present the petition, stating the subject of the petition and the nuance of the reason. We will not debate the petition today. After the petition has been. After the petition has been presented, in accordance with the constitution, I will move that it is referred to the appropriate body. I will now ask councillor Milburn to present the petition.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, please accept this petition requesting a resident pathway scheme for the bottom of Broaden Road numbers one to fifteen and also for twenty four to thirty six Lindhurst Street. The petition has thirty three signatures, if I may present this.
Thank you.
Somebody is going to take it. Thank you. Thank you.
Is that accepted?
Accepted.
Is that agreed?
Agreed.
The next petition is to receive motions under procedure rule ten. No more motions have been received under this rule. That concludes the business for today's meeting. I'm going for your attendance.
Thank you, Mr Mayor.